Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meetings for Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. Council members are encouraging virtual public participation as there is limited seating in council chambers due to the number of COVID infections in our area. All meetings will be live streamed on the city website and the city Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Yeah.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name and neighborhood. For the record, our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Hello. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. We, the people of Bon Air, have significant investment into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. The largest investment that the average American will make is their home. Our biggest assets are being threatened. This is why we, as a community, have expressed significant concern about the potential development of Bon Air School into anything other than a green space. We already had a valuable school stolen from our community. We deserve a valuable green space to replace it. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Negligent infliction of emotional distress and block busting are being perpetrated by those who oppose our community. Real damages are occurring to the Bon Air community. I have no doubt that this controversy was a contributing factor to the demise of my husband. The PPS created this controversy against we, the property owners of Bon Air. My husband did his duty to promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the people he served. Will you, as elected public servants, do your duty to help the people of Bon Air? My husband, Michael, was duty bound his entire adult life. He completed his mission on earth well. He is now one of the watchers and helping in the spiritual realm. He is still a force with us. A neighbor wrote, "I think one of the best ways we will honor him is to keep fighting for Bon Air and be kind to our neighbors." We will commit to that promise. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Silver, and I have a residence in Trenton, New Jersey, and Quito, Ecuador. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, 2024, globalintelligence.society.org. Optimal information and intelligence from the 21 primary disciplines to solve our problems, parallel, alternative government. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Association of American Geographers and the Geological Society of America. January is South North American Indigenous American Intelligence Month, RLM Copyright 2012-2022. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is linkage with nations of the Americas. I and the Global Intelligence Society are seeking a link with Quito, capital of the República del Ecuador. We in Pittsburgh and the USA, in my view, can learn from this tempestuous Latin American nation. Some Ecuadorian informations. Ecuador is a world-significant, geographically-central nation like the USA, though the longitude is 120 degrees to 70 degrees west from prime meridian bound the USA, Maine between the Pacific and Atlantic, unlike Ecuador, where the equator at 0 degrees latitude splits Ecuador, situating 1/3 of the country in the northern hemisphere and 2/3 in the south. Ecuador, alike the USA, is one of only 17 biospecial mega diverse nations, according to the World Conservation Monitoring Center. Mega diverse means possessing a minimum of 5,000 ensemic unique species and an oceanic border. Ecuador, unlike the USA, enacted illegally enforceable rights of nature to protect its biodiversity. This is more than our EPA. Ecuador, like the USA, has enacted legal protections for exploration of its substantial petroleum assets. Ecuador has biologist Dr. Marina Segovia to help make sense of this polarity. Ecuador, like the USA, has a financial system based on the US dollar after going off the sucre in 2000, but Ecuador, unlike the USA, via El Banco Central de Ecuador, formally permits the legal purchase of non-dollar cryptocurrency. You can put it in your bank accounts there, but not here, but prohibits transactions in crypto. But the Ecuadorians are going ahead and increasingly transacting crypto, and the central bank doesn't interfere. Ecuadorian presidential candidate Giovanni Andrade in 2024 proposed a federal cryptocurrency, and we need it as well.
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. We'll now move to any speakers in chambers wishing to speak. Please come forward. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes.
My name is Giovanni Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. This is Katie wherever it's tires at the top of the hill. Last week, we had, okay, now the two units have to stop, and I'm gonna keep on telling you, that's Kraus and Coghill. Anytime I speak, he starts speaking. But I want to tell you this, Ms. Smith. Yesterday, I talked with Mrs. Smith. You know, she has a beautiful heart. Sometimes you take on too much and you can't follow through with what you said, but you have a beautiful heart. She made sure I got home because she said that I shouldn't be walking in the snow. I got a jitney down here because of the roads. Now Kraus on the TV, he was saying how good job. Maybe you did it on your south side, but on the hill, the jitney driver say, it's terrible. He said, "You can't even go up on Sugar Top." Now, I want to say something, and if you listen, we could do better as far as being able to move through the city. When they do the snow, he comes and he knocks it all in the intersection, and then you can't get in and out of the intersection. I took Brownie, my husband, who had a stroke, worked for this city for over 20 something years, had a stroke, and I took and went, he had to go to the hospital. So I shoveled all the snow out of the intersection, all the old women sitting there. He said they were saying, "What is she doing? What is she doing?" Soon as I got finished, here come a city truck, knocked it all back. I called them. I'm trying to say, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do you understand? I saw how they did it in Penn Hills. They got a dynamite system, and you need to have a truck coming behind your snow that you're putting in the intersection. Can't you see that? We can't get in, we can't get out, and you did such a fantastic job." I thought it was Gable. They said Gable's gone. So you got somebody that's still doing the same old thing that Costa was doing, not coming up in the hill like he was supposed to. Now, also, very quickly, we had a hearing about the seminary on Highland. It's getting ready to build a big building, but there was a new, Gary called in, him and his wife is building a home, building it for about a year or something, almost finished, and he's saying, "Please do not put that building because you will block our view." And I'm asking everyone that is listening, call the council, your council people, because they were not here, only Burgess. So call them and tell them, "Help Gary and his wife, his fiancee. Do not block their vision." That's what we're saying. How are you gonna come from the seminary, even though I'm telling you the seminary do let them, the kids play over there and they park? I forgot that children actually attend that school. Now, listen, please, I'm telling you, Gary needs help because Burgess made sure, yes, made sure you didn't even come to the meeting. This man is saying, "I'm building this beautiful home." Thank you. Yes, have a nice day.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in council and online with us today wishing to speak? Any other individuals in council and online? Seeing none, we will move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Let the record reflect that we have been joined by Councilman Kraus, Councilman Coghill, and Councilman Goss. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. One supplemental paper.
Rule 22, ordinance amending the city code of Title I Administrative Article III Organization, Chapter 113, mayor by supplementing the sections related to the Office of Management and Budget.
Mr. Prue, second with discussion.
Discussion, Council President.
Thank you. I just want to introduce Jake Pollock. I think this is the first time that he's at one of our meetings?
Yes, I believe it is.
So it's the first time in this capacity. I think he's probably been here in other capacities in previous years. But Jake, would you introduce yourself to the public and just give a little synopsis about what we're doing here?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Council President Kelsmith, and thank you Chairman Lavelle. You're correct, Councilwoman. This is the first time I've been back as part of the Gani administration, but of course, no stranger to council meetings from some previous roles I've held in the past. The legislation that the administration is offering today and that we hope we can have your support for is a minor modification to the code-defined sort of powers and duties of the Office of Management and Budget. It's a small change, but one that we feel will be beneficial to implementing Mayor Gani's vision of organizing the structure of the distribution of duties between his own executive office and OMB for the day-to-day coordination of certain activities of city government. So this change would simply expand the definition of OMB to include not just budgetary and financial management, which are the powers that is been exercising for some time and are reflected in the current language, but also a role in coordinating and communicating across departments on the mayor's behalf on a day-to-day basis. Again, nothing in this language would change the fact that department directors, you know, from a chain of command perspective, report directly to the mayor. However, it's just relocating the staff that assist the mayor in coordinating those activities within OMB. Specifically, it would call for the creation of a distinct division of budget and a division of management within OMB to reflect this. And there are companion budgetary amendments that have already also been submitted to council, but I believe they may show up later on the agenda to be held for a public hearing consistent with the process there. That makes some staffing adjustments in OMB to reflect this migrating a few positions from the mayor's office into OMB and adding a new deputy director of budget to the department to ensure, you know, both sound financial and work in operational management.
So I just want to be clear with members that this is a little bit different than we typically do, but I want to thank Jake Pollock, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, and Councilman Kraus for meeting in the evening and trying to work through this and get this to a place where we could all work together. So I'm asking council members to put in support of it because we did work together collectively and tried to get to a place where we all felt comfortable. So, thank you.
You, Councilman Kraus.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Jake. How are you?
Good morning, Bruce. Excuse me, Councilman. I'm doing very well. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I too want to recognize your work and your willingness to work with council leadership to bring this piece of legislation to the table. I know it was important to the administration, and it was important to members of council to have a better understanding of the changes that were being requested. Part of the divvying of duties from budget to management is spelled out in this legislation. Could you please speak a little bit more to the management component of this legislation, who might oversee that and what that all might entail? Council President Kelsmith and I have had this conversation numerous times and every member around code enforcement and the importance of code enforcement, and so the management component of this is especially important to members, not to malign the budgetary aspect of it, but could you talk a little bit?
Management, please. I absolutely can, and I completely agree. I think that that's important to this administration as well, which is why we're, let's say, starting down this path together. At present, our proposal is to move two existing positions that are currently within the mayor's office budget, the chief operating and administrative officer, and the chief economic development officer into the newly formed division of management. So we would not be, I mean, we are adding one support staff to assist those folks in those duties, you know, in the course of that. But we're not, at this time, proposing an extensive build-out of that office so much as just re-nesting and perhaps refocusing those positions in an architecture, right, that puts them in closer coordination and collaboration with the budget team. That being said, I can imagine in future years, again, if we collectively, the administration and council see benefit to this approach, which I fully anticipate we will, I can imagine further build-out of that team to include additional supports and, you know, additional folks participating there. But at present, for them, as a functional area, it's mainly focused on relocating existing scopes of work into a new kind of hierarchy, if you will, with more to come potentially in discussion over the next few years.
So the role that we're charged with is one of democracy, if you will. We are brought to the table in a very democratic process by majority. We are challenged with governing at the table, largely financial in nature, but we govern by consensus, by majority, craft the legislation to effectuate change that our constituency wishes to see, and then through that process, we hand it over to the administrators, regardless of who those administrators may be at that moment in time. But that is the challenge that we face as members of council without directive administrative authority to know that there's a trust factor, that the work that we have done here, which is to carry the will of the people to the table to effectuate the change that is lobbied for, to hand it off to administrators and make certain that those changes are indeed effectuated and that people can have confidence in their elected leaders and their administrators.
Again, I completely agree. You know, I take that charge extremely seriously in the role that Mayor Gani has asked me to play in his administration in supervising, again, those sort of day-to-day processes. And just, I guess, I will fully commit, you know, on the mayor's behalf and on my own behalf, open and transparent dialogue with council to ensure the effective delivery of those services and delivery on those charges that the administrative side and the executive branch received from council in partnership as the Home Rule Charter intends.
And that has certainly been the, I can't think of the word I wanted, certainly been the norm to date, that we've had very great, great open lines of communication, talk regularly, can reach Mayor Gani at a moment's notice. You're in constant contact with members. I expect the same thing to happen when Jake Wheatley joins the administration, but I do want to give you kudos for the very open, inconsistent lines of communication that exist. So appreciate that. And then lastly, something that I'm sure is on the minds of a lot of people out there, especially Councilwoman Kelsmith, Councilman Coghill, and myself, is the fourth division. And I just wanted to put it out there that we are meeting this afternoon at noon. I greatly appreciate your willingness to bring us together collectively with the Department of DPW to discuss the construction of the fourth division. I know we've been sidelined by a lot of reasons. It's very easy to blame COVID and supply chains, but a lot of that has been that. But just to sort of alleviate some of the fears that our constituency has out there, that we have indeed had open dialogue with you about the construction of the fourth division, the urgency of it, and to let everyone know that we'll be meeting at noon today, and greatly appreciate your willingness to support and assist in that.
Of course. It's an absolutely crucial project. I was never under any illusion that it wasn't, but if I needed anything to underscore that further, it was going to ride along with a plow driver out of the fourth division. Of course, as council members all know, are currently being dispatched out of a facility in the Strip District while we await construction. And it is not lost on me, nor the mayor, nor any other member of our administration, that the additional time, travel time that it takes them to get from their dispatch location to their route has an effect on their ability to provide high-quality service. I have great respect and admiration for the very hard work that all of those drivers are doing to account for that, but we owe them some air support in the form of getting this facility built this year so that that's not an issue next winter.
Appreciate it, Jake. Thank you so much for your time. Those are all my questions, comments. See you at noon, and then after that at 1:30. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jake, for joining us today. I appreciate it, and you're answering most of the questions that we had discussed or that I had asked you previously or asked our council president. One thing I wanted to clarify, from my edification, because I don't think I've asked this or tried to clarify yet with anyone, is whether the administration anticipates nominating a chief of operations or how that might, and if so, how that might interact with the director of management in this new role.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilperson, and let me clarify there if I said it unclearly before. We don't anticipate a director of management at this time. What we are doing is moving the position, the existing positions of chief operating and administrative officer and the position of chief economic development officer into that division. So they would be two additional senior-level members of the Office of Management and Budget answering to me, reporting to me, who are handling coordination of different departments or projects or activities. We do have someone in that position presently, Lisa Frank, under current rules, that's not a nominated position, that's a discretionary hire of the mayor. I would believe we may have to do some crosswalking if this change takes effect about the interview process that council articulated at the end of last year, but as that position is presently housed within the executive office of the mayor, that's why we haven't formally sent a communication to council effectuating that. But of course, we'll comply with those rules if this change implicates them. But that was publicly announced as a hire a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, understood. And you did say that before. I think I heard one of the chief's positions, but maybe not the chief of operations as being there. And thank you for clarifying that there's not an actual director of management, that it's housed within the new division of management. So that'll make sense.
The omen culture here gets a little confusing.
Yeah. Eventually, a sort of org chart might be helpful for all of us, too.
Well, we intend to prepare one of those to supplement the budget document, but we're sort of waiting for this step to confirm direction. But yes, absolutely. And I'll just note that because the charter establishes the Office of Management and Budget as a bureau within, using the charters where it's a bureau within the mayor's office, we couldn't use the term bureau again internally, so it just gets a little confusing.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Are there any further, Councilman Burgess?
Um, so, Mr. Pollock, we thank you for your willingness to work with council leadership, and want to thank the president for her leadership, Mr. Lavelle for his insight, and Mr. Kraus for his wisdom and experience. I just want to really, more for the public than for you, to sort of explain what we're doing. Council has oversight in the overall organization of our government. That is a council thing, right? It is our responsibility to advise and consent generally. And so what we're doing with this legislation is we're changing the structure of government. I cannot imagine how difficult it must be to be the first African-American mayor of our city. I think it would be extremely difficult and challenging. And so our job is to be helpful, if we can, and I'll talk more about this this afternoon. That's our role, is to advise and consent and be helpful. And so one of the ways that we can be helpful is certainly understanding, and what we're doing is changing government and changing essentially its structure. The new office of budget and management is now shifted, and most of the administrative function of the city will fall underneath it, right? The chief of staff position is being divided into two parts. One sort of outwardly focus on state relationships and, I guess, community relationships and outside the city. In your role as a co-equal person, will be to manage and run the city day-to-day. That's actually what we're doing. I think either the code or the charter, I'm not sure which one, requires you at some point to update council with the organizational chart filed with the clerk. I know that exists, and that that is something that we understand you've not done yet, but is required at some point. And so for our, just for our, in our sort of intermediate edification, when you come this afternoon, if you could also be prepared to explain to us, at least so far, who the new hires are and sort of what their roles and responsibilities are, since we don't, as a council, have privy to that information, knowing that that will change, and you will hire more people, and it will be, you know, but I think it would be helpful to us as we walk down this road. And so I'll tell you in advance, that's what I'll be kind of looking for this afternoon, to sort of understand how you're implementing this new form of government. But I want to make also clear that I will confirm, vote to confirm you. So it's not, it is not subject to that. My vote to support you is not subject to that, but really, my willingness to want to help and to understand who the people are and kind of what they do and how this is going to function so that we, as council and as council leadership, can best be helpful by having full information. And so we look forward to working with you in this very challenging time. Pre, I don't know, it's not post-COVID, it's still in the midst of COVID, right? We're still, you know, COVID-bound, so in the pandemic. And so we look forward to working with you to help lead our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I just also want to thank you, Jake, for working with us to help organize this, and I look forward to working with you in your new position. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. That takes us to our new paper, Bill 15.
Bill 15, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Daniel D. Ellenbach in the Amount of $7,500 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It will be held for executive session. I need a motion to approve the invoices.
A move.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Invoices are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One new paper, Bill 16.
Bill 16, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Make Expenditures and Enter on Behalf of the City Into a Professional Services Agreement with Third-Party Entities, Including the Poise Foundation for Services Related to the Administration $1,950,050 of Funds from the City Stop the Violence Fund to Third-Parties at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $2 Million, $49,950 of Which Will Compensate the Poise Foundation for Its Services.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were in the house.
Yeah, motion approved.
Second. New discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. One deferred paper, Bill 1913.
Bill 1913, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Witnesses Title IX, Zoning Chapter 922, Development Review Procedures, Section 922-10E, 2, 922-11B, 3, and 922-11C, 2, with new subsection, Affordable Housing Impact Statements.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It will be held for a cablecast public hearing. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 2124. Opposed, it will be held for a cable cast public hearing. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 2124.
Bill 2124, resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning Article Two, Chapter 905, Section 90503D, and Article Seven, Chapter 922, Section 92212G, for the Pittsburgh Theological Seminary Name Institutional Master Plan dated October 6, 2021 on property zone EMI, educational medical institution District 11 Ward, Council District 9.
Motion to approve.
Second. New discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it receives an affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:30. Council will hold an interview for the director of the Office of Management and Budget. And then next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, January 26 and Wednesday, January 26, sorry, 27th respectively. Both meetings will be held at 10 a.m. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on council's meeting webpage by 9 a.m. the morning of the meeting. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2128. Are there any announcements from members, Councilman O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we, my office and the clerk's office, along with the president, are going to schedule a briefing for members. There is an Al Qassan resolution coming over to us in the next month or so, and we wanted to brief all members. So motion to call for a briefing on Al Qassan matter.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Oh, we'll work with the, Adam Clerk to get that scheduled.
Is it, is this briefing public?
No.
Uh, no, it, so it's a, it's a bill that's going to be coming before council. And the bill will be obviously open to the public. And this is just, Al Qassan wanted to discuss with members in an executive session prior to the bill. They want to meet with, you know, three members at a time if we can. And then obviously the bill is open for a public discussion when it comes to the floor.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Yeah. I don't believe we need to enter executive session for briefing. I'd be curious to know if an executive session can be called on something.
Sorry, I, I didn't call, I didn't mean executive session. I just wanted to hold briefings for council members.
Right. Yeah, just for the edification of the public at large, this is not uncommon to be briefed on matters of legislation, but there's never a quorum present. And there, there'll be two scheduled to ensure that there's not form present. And I don't believe we need to call for that in a vote in any way. We, am I wrong? I, I, I can't remember. Right? We don't need to call that in.
We don't need.
You can, you don't have to.
Councilman wanted to.
Okay.
He wanted to be on the record.
I should. Perfect. Happy to support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah. Briefing will be scheduled. Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to first say that we're still having some issues with the snow. So I'm hoping we get through those and thank our residents for their patience and our crews for their work. I told a story yesterday, I'm just gonna tell it real briefly. During Snowmageddon, I went on a, in a plow with Bobby Pomacina, and he was driving down Glenmore Street, which is in Sheridan, is a hill with a drop on the one side. He started going sideways, but he was on one phone, on a walkie talkie and driving with his elbows. The plow came off the truck. He gets out of the car, it's freezing. I'm thinking he's going to get killed. We're sideways on a roadway. He gets out of the car, goes in the back, pulls out a box with tools in it, I guess some kind of toolbox, looking for a screw to put the plow back on, can't find a screw, gets a nail about six inches long, it was huge. And he puts it through, bends it down through and puts the plow back on, continues plowing till he gets back in. And I just want to say that truck is still in service. So when we talk about why it takes so long and why the vehicles are so important, that's what our, our crews are working with and dealing with. But anyway, on a separate thing, I, I read the article in the Post Gazette about the Wilkinsburg legislation that I put in, ordinance I put in, and that Reverend Burgess's comments. And I just want to be very clear, I called the reporter yesterday because he, there was a comment that someone who doesn't really seem to know our process, that we introduce the ordinance in hopes of stopping the conversation. Well, actually, we typically do introduce an ordinance and then have a post agenda or a public hearing. That typically is our process. Although in this case, we have had a public, a post agenda and two public hearings already on the same subject, which is already unusual and more than we typically do. And I've already worked with Councilman Coghill and Councilman Kraus and Councilman Burgess on scheduling a second post agenda, which is highly unusual on the same subject. So we have done above and beyond what we typically do. So for somebody to make that comment, I called the Post Gazette and asked them to remove it because it was inaccurate. I, I don't think that it was removed, but I just want people to know, we are not trying to stop the conversation. We have actually escalated and added to the conversation tremendously. It would be helpful if facts were printed instead of the misinformation that seems to be prevalent and surrounding this, this entire process, which is part of the problem.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Gross.
Just to add to the council president's comments, that we are under a judge's order to complete this and take action on this. And, and our deadline is April, forgive me, five, I believe.
We're already talking about holding another week. So that's, that adds four weeks to our.
It's just important to put that out there, that, that, that timeline is really being governed by the Commonwealth Court and, and the edict that we must act. And, and it takes time back. So on a completely different subject, I read this weekend in the Post Gazette that Dan Rossi, who's the executive director of Humane Animal Rescue, is leaving after 12 years. He is going to Palm Springs. He, he and his husband are going to Palm Springs and they're, he's going to manage the animal care and control center in Palm Springs. So.
Poor guy.
Yeah. Well, I think it's really interesting, but I, I just think the world of Dan Rossi and, and the work that he has done. And I think it would be important for council to recognize the work that he has done. So Councilman Burgess, being that this is in the ninth council district, you'll share a proclamation with me. Yeah. And we'll, and we'll see if we can get Dan to come in next Tuesday. If not, we'll do it via Zoom. But I, I think it's pretty damn important of us to recognize the work that he's done over the last 12 years. One of the things that Humane Animal Rescue is dealing with right now is what is being referred to as pandemic pets, people that have adopted during the pandemic, which was really, really encouraging. But now that people are returning to work, Count, Madam Clerk and I talk about this regularly, pets that are used to having you home on a daily basis are beginning to suffer some behavioral problems because people are leaving the home and not being around. And so in light of that, people are beginning to return pets that they adopted during the pandemic, now that they're returning to work. And so Dan and Humane Animal Rescue is one of the shelters that's being inundated right now with animals that are being returned. Oh, yeah, that's coming. Well, you do that, you do, you, you, but anyway, you know, so I just want the public to be aware of that, that right now the animal shelters are bursting at the seams with, with pets that need to be adopted. And again, you know, just to recognize Dan Rossi. And then, Madam President, brought to, to mind something that Officer Laffey out of Zone Three has done now for, I want to say, close to 17 years now. And I believe she has exceeded $300,000 raised over the years in Biscuit Bingo, which is one of the, the most fun events that happens in, in the city every year. And it's coming up, Madam President, March? It's right around the corner.
March 26.
March 26?
Yeah, noon at IBW.
It's always at IBW. There are 600 seats. The tickets fly out the door. So I'm sure she'll be, Officer Laffey will be announcing very shortly the, the event again. But it, it's a wonderful cause. It's amazing how much money she's able to raise in her dedication to the care of animal population. And please support her. It's a, it's a fun, you always go to, it's a fun.
You always play bingo. They don't let me play bingo.
I loved it. We have so much fun that day. But anyway, thank you very much.
I'll take Madam Clerk this.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Be very, very brief. I, I said yesterday, I will be much more vocal about Wilkinsburg than I've been. And I will say something even new today. From the very beginning, I told the supporters of annexation that I would need time to talk to the Wilkinsburg residents and the residents of my community to talk about its impact. I warned them from the very beginning, I could not support annexation during this calendar year. I told them that. Yet, they ignored my advice. I told them to bring it to us a year from now, to give us time to talk to our residents so that it would be, so in this process, I do not see this as the end of conversation. I intend wholeheartedly to spend the next year, when I say calendar, it was really last calendar year, I asked them not to bring it last calendar year and not to try to put it in the May primary because it was too soon. I will, with them, hopefully with Wilkinsburg Council, I hoped, and under the leadership of this president, I hope to participate in an ongoing conversation. I'd like to see us all get to yes. It is really not us that is trying to stop the conversation. It is the proponents of annex trying to force their way. It is somewhat bothersome to me that Wilkinsburg is a city of 60% African American people. I am, for the most part, the council person that will be mostly affected, somewhere between 60 to 70% of those Wilkinsburg people, if coming into the city will come into my council district. I am an African American member of council and I represent the largest amount of African Americans of any council district. Yet this effort is almost entirely led by people who are not African American. And yet they are, they are, they will not respect my wishes at all. And they go outside of my council district to try to put pressure on me and not talk to me, not work with me, but to find other non-African Americans who have no vested interest in my community to try to force me. I find it highly offensive. And then they say things in the paper without talking to me. Now, you can continue to do that. But if you do that, I will now start to be public about my distaste for this process of these people who do not live, Wilkinsburg is more like Homewood and Lincoln Leamington. It is not like other areas of this city. And for these people to begin to, to, to attack us because of their own personal priorities that have nothing to do with the African American population of Pittsburgh or the African American population of Homewood, Lincoln Leamington, Garfield and East Liberty, I also find offensive. So I am willing to be quiet and we can work this out. And irregardless of my distaste for the process, I do promise, after this process is over, I will continue the conversation. I support at some point the merger or annexation of Wilkinsburg. I support that it should happen, but it should be happening at a place where everybody is comfortable, not a time that disrupts, divides, disunifies. We've seen this, you, you've seen this in all of our public hearings. We've seen this in all of our post agendas. It has been deeply polarizing. And I think part of the reason it's been polarizing is because you have these, they have not allowed those of us of legitimate African American leadership to participate in this process in an equal way. Instead, they've went outside of the community and instead of having these conversations, they found outside advocates to try to pressure us to do this. And I, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm a lot of stuff. I'm, I'm old, I'm bald, you know, I'm a lot of stuff, but I'm not afraid. I, I'm not afraid. And pressuring me is absolutely the worst thing you want to do. Because when you pressure me, I don't get more, I don't bend, I just stand stronger.
I see something to that. I just want to say, I, I agree with that. And I also want to say, I think now it's time for us to start looking in who's funding this and start making that very publicly so that the public knows who's really behind this. And to see the effects that they're having on our city as a whole, whether it's our school district, whether it's the development happening in the city. I think the public needs to know a lot more. And so we'll start revealing some of that. But I also think that people keep talking about numbers and, and the importance of numbers and money and money in this. To me, that's not what, to me, that's what this, the problem is. This has been centered around funding and money and who's making it. But it's not been centered around people. And so for that part, that's the part I'm going to focus on and, and what the effect is to the people. And I, I got a lot of phone calls today from Wilkinsburg residents thanking me for the legislation, for the ordinance yesterday. So I think we're going to start having a lot more, many more conversations. We're going to be a lot more aggressive in, in the fact that we have to. We didn't ask for this. We asked to work with us. And, and I just really would hope, I want to be honest too, I think that this, the part that's most upsetting to me is that this pressure is not even coming from anybody living in the city of Pittsburgh, not anybody representing the city of Pittsburgh, not our elected officials. I've, you know, been able to talk to the county exec. I've been able to talk to Councilman Coghill. I'm sure I can talk to, to the controller, but we've had other people that are making these comments and doing things. So that's the way they want to go. I think, you know, they're forcing us and forcing our hand instead of trying to do what's best for the city and Wilkinsburg as a, together and as a whole. They're forcing us to make decisions before we have the information and things that we need. And that, to me, is not numbers and who's making money and who's going to make money and what developer's going to develop. But to me, it's about how it's going to affect the people. So we'll start focusing a little bit more on that and educating the public a lot more. And I think this would be a good time to start using our new community affairs office, once those people are on board, getting them out into the community and start educating the public on what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So note.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.